Any requests of changes?
Hi.
Hi, y'all.
I think that Peggy had her sign a continuation agreement. I think that would be in the minutes as to what that was.
And I need to know what it was. Was it the McPhee?
I don't know.
I think it was McPhee. I will confirm that with Peggy.
Yeah, I was real hesitant to do it because I'm going.
What?
I've never signed one before. I won't just wait until the way Roman gets here.
You feel so flattered, tell me why you're sitting here and signing it.
George, I'm having a senior moment.
Oh, R E G A.
Thank you. George knows my senior moment.
He's not related to Ronald.
He might. You'd be sitting here. You'd be in the movie theater. While I'd be coming here with sack full of money saying, "I don't know what to do with this." We could help you with that if you brought us here.
We have a Star Wars initiative. We could put that money.
Who moved that turning?
Did you see this, Wayne?
Yes. I haven't looked at it. I wish.
Hi.
Oh.
It's cranky, but it's not just. I'll go print it online, though. It's nobody's deal. Can you take it back?
Okay, I call it done.
Okay, while we're waiting for Lori to change the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, other than you want to put the grant that maybe we'll get it.
Is this the thing we were looking at?
We're going to say the McPhee.
You got all your scanning done?
I will confirm that.
Good morning.
I have a scan challenge request.
We'll email her.
Make sure that that's what it was.
I need a copy of it.
So, minutes are good, other than adding that?
And I added it, but it may have more clarity because I need to spell out what McPhee is and get a copy of that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes on Stevens with the change.
I would take that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are passed and approved. Nine o'clock with George Reagan.
Boy, do I have to stand or sit in any special spot?
We're relaxed. We're relaxed.
Ends up whether you want money or not. I feel like, oh, then I better get closer.
I talk loud so the thing can hear you.
Oh, is that, is it working?
It's picking up fine.
Oh, this one is. You're on the air, Mr. Reagan.
Okay, end of speech. Well, I was visiting Kelly and Lori the other day and got too much time on my hands, so get here with all the ideas. And I was relating some experiences that I had. We were talking, because I'm out looking for work or for jobs. And the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation came up. And I said, "You know, someone from Mineral County should be down there. They had their big elk camp last weekend in Las Vegas." I said, "Wait a minute, I should be down there." And so then the thing, it kind of gelled in, it's like Mineral County needs an advocate, a lobbyist, someone who, their job is to promote Mineral County. And, you know, the more I thought about it, it's like, well, there's this group over here, and this group over here, and this idea here, and all these people are working, but maybe they're not aware of what everyone else is doing. Trying to keep my thoughts in a straight line here. So Lori said, "Well, why don't you come talk to us about that and see if, as a group, you would be interested just in the idea right now?" And then it's like, okay. Pretty quickly, I know the question comes back, "How do we pay for this?" Since we talked, I visited with Jim DeBree because I really didn't understand what he did and Glenn. And yesterday, I talked to Kevin. And it's like, okay, is somebody already doing what I'm thinking of? And I don't think that really has happened. The other thing that I learned from visiting with these guys is I don't think that grants and volunteering and all that, that's fine to look into that, but that's not the way that it could work. So that's, that's as simply stated as I can, you know, put it. I can elaborate on things that you all know in my circle of male acquaintances. Men who should be working full-time are not. And, you know, we don't have to get into the kids. It's the same thing. What are we doing here? So having said that, there's that idea. If I came to you and said, "I'm funded by Bill Gates. Do you want me to do this?" What would you say? Go for it, right? It's like, we don't have to put out a dime, and you're going to do this. You'd want to know what I was going to do and how I was going to do it. And that, that would still need to be addressed and, you know, outlined in the document. But at this point, it's just like, okay, here's the idea. Is it a good idea? And that's where I'm at.
Peggy was in yesterday Stevens', and they have a grant. They're forming a coalition to, isn't it, to look into what they could do as far as bringing economy into the, wasn't she, isn't that what they were doing was forming a coalition?
Obesity, what was it? Obesity, jobs.
Unemployment, alcohol.
And alcohol.
And social things.
But, you know, they're, this coalition is also looking into what they can do to, you know, bring economy into the county.
And is this the, this the first you heard of that?
Yeah, well, this was the first we heard yesterday was, you know, she'd been in and I, and I told her that you were, you know, about your friend that went to that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Should I relate that experience?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Well, one of the things that actually Roger Hurst stopped me and I reminded him of it yesterday. I've traveled to events with a friend of mine who's, who's worked nationally as a sales manager. He's really good, but, you know, so I got to see how he does it and how these things go. And his job has changed, and he was at a totally unrelated industry event in L.A. He went there just to go. I think it was some kind of technology thing. And he was visiting, he just went up to a booth and said, "Well, what do you do?" And they said, "Oh, well, we do such and such." Okay, he said, "Well, I'm looking to," you know, he wanted someone to monitor the internet for his company. And they said, "Oh, you need to go talk to these guys over here." It was over there, well, they went away with a contract from his company for a year to do that internet monitoring. So just that quick, and that personal interaction, because I asked Larry, I said, "What are you doing in Chicago, downtown Chicago?" And he said, "Well, that's where these guys are." And so, you know, like going back to the elk camp thing, well, it's full of vendors, it's full of people now. That's just one little segment of the industry, you know, that outdoor sports industry. Not necessarily where we need to even start or stop, but they're all there. Mineral County's there. And you may not, it's a personal interaction. And you may not, like, you and I meet and we have something in common, but that's not the relationship that right there may bring something to Mineral County. But right there, you've got, you've got a relationship, and it's a face-to-face relationship. And then this guy says, "Oh, well, those guys live in Chicago and they hate it." You know, it's like, oh, okay, well, I'll go ahead and talk to them, you know? And that's what I learned from traveling with Larry is it's not about selling things. It's not about selling Mineral County. It's about making those relationships and keeping them with people that you would never really, you know, they would be hard to find otherwise. You know, having an internet presence is great, and it needs to be there, but people aren't trolling, looking to move to Mineral County necessarily, and going to find what they want on the internet. So that was, all that stuff was rolling around in my head. What?
Yeah, I agree. Networking, that's what it's all about. That's what we all try to do with our board meetings and with our meetings here when we go to conferences. I don't know, we hardly agree with, and, you know, just a little bit of networking face-to-face, you know, getting to know the ranger in Nine Mile, Chad Benson and Tony here, they, they, they understand where we're coming from in terms of, like you said, how many guys we know want to do, want a job. And if we've been making pleas with them, you know, their status and position for service to help us hit some of the jobs, I mean, it won't be like it used to be, but the problem is that they understand and they want to help, but they can't do anything because it's higher than them. It's D.C., it's policy, it's bureaucratic rules and so, you know. I hear what you're saying, and we, we're kind of trying, but it's sort of hard when 90% of the land is locked up, the opportunity for other jobs. We've got some private land. I don't know who we can entice. We're always thinking about that, but, but I, you know, I agree with that concept. I think we already kind of tried to do that.
There's so many trade fairs and stuff going on, you know? I don't somehow, you know, I don't, we don't have the money to do it, but, you know, just somebody to go to these trade fairs and make contact, you know? But I don't know how we would go about doing that is the big thing.
One of the things I would say that where I'm coming from anyway is we're stuck with the Forest Service. And there's enough people in Mineral County who won't want to, I'll say, work with them or push, push them and, you know, get them to do things. And we all know what that's like. And I would say, they ain't going anywhere, okay? And not to tell those people to stop, you're wasting your time, because they're driven to, to interact with the Forest Service and, but we're stuck with the organization and we're stuck with the land. So let's use the land and forget the organization, you know? And it's nothing other than it's here, you know? And here's, here's what it, what it gives Mineral County.
What do you mean, use the land?
Well, if it's 92% federal land, we're not going to go in there tomorrow and Tom's going to say, "We have this giant timber sale. We're going to put X number of people to work and set up so that blah, blah, blah," or, you know, Jim DeBree related. He's still got this idea that we, as a county, need to manage a watershed of federal land just to show them how we can do it, you know? Use that as a demonstration tool and use it to promote our economy. Well, that's a great idea, but it's never going to happen. It's not going to happen. But that watershed is still there. And, oh, I don't know. If your industry is, it's in downtown Chicago, well, just imagine what that's like. And I don't know if any of you would live there, but let's say you are there and you really don't want to be there. And, well, here's the opposite of downtown Chicago. It's Superior, Montana. It's Alberton, it's St. Regis, it's Hagen. And here's what we've got. And what we have is a lot of unrestricted, undeveloped forest land. And that's pretty, a lot of people don't have that. So it could just be there, or you can use it to your advantage. And as I talk to different people about this silly idea, you know, the things come up, "Well, we don't have this. We don't have a workforce. We don't have housing. We don't have a lot of private land." And maybe those things are true. We don't have broadening. But if we don't have it, and that's the way we promote it, we ain't never going to get it. Well, I don't think that's true, yours, because we are working on those things all the time. There was a time there was no low-income housing in St. Regis. Now there is low-income housing in St. Regis, and they're working on getting more. There's more low-income housing in Superior. We're working on getting more. So to say you guys have just cast everything aside and... Oh, I'm not, I'm not... Well, I mean, that's what you just said. You know, you said, "If you look at it that way, we're never going to have it." We don't look at it that way. We have been working on those things, and we continue to work on those things. The expansion at the hospital has brought more jobs in. It may continue to bring more jobs in, or it may not. Hopefully, it will. You know, the expansion at Tricon has brought more jobs in. Hopefully, that will continue. It, I don't think that, that we've forgotten. I think funding someone, we have, we have advocates. We have the chamber. We have the St. Regis Community Council. They don't go to the trade fairs, but a guide from in Fishcrick does. Another guide from somewhere does. You know, I mean, word of mouth, but bringing a business from Chicago, we don't have much to offer a business from Chicago in Mineral County. What do we offer? We don't have any ground to give. We don't, you know, we'd have to really look and dig and be creative to give them much of a tax break. So why would a large business, some of these businesses will locate here just because they want to be here. And whether we have an advocate or not, I think that will happen because they're going to say, "Hey, that looks like a pretty good place to live." And they're going to come. But I don't know. And we haven't given up. There are things that have been done and will continue to be done.
And other little things that people aren't fully aware of that impede the expansion of business that we're trying to work on, too. Like one is the three-phase power ends at the sawmill on the, on the Mullin Road side of the river there. So for example, out there by the meat shop and the tax derby shop and all that, people, businesses that might want to build there are deterred by the fact that there's no three-phase power to run an industrial complex of any kind. Jerry Stru, for example, has to buy these inverters just to run his meat saws. And they're expensive, and they burn out, and they need replating. So we're trying to work with the co-op and Northwestern to get somebody to put three-phase power out there, so at least we have an area that's inviting right now. It's, I mean, you could, you could run a welding shop out there. You could barely run a meat shop out there. That's one problem that we're trying to work on. And the other one is there was an unintended consequence when the former commissioners agreed to the land swap at Fishcrick. And that was that some of that Montana Legacy Project money prohibits any kind of improvements on wildlife management area land. There's a sliver of the Fishcrick Road that crosses a checkerboard where that Five Alley Land Trust or Nature Conservancy land swap with the fish and game ends up prohibiting any electricity going up to Holonawal Lodge, where any of the residences up there. Intended consequence, nobody realized that little stipulation was buried in the paperwork. So now what we thought might be a good thing for businesses or motels or outfitters or restaurants, now the Holonawal has to continue to operate off a generator. So what, we, we have to deal with all kinds of little outside problems that aren't, aren't our own. They're either held up by a federal agency or by an electric company who is too expensive to go, go west with three-phase power, et cetera, et cetera.
I just wanted to back up, Duane, and say that what I was describing there about, you know, we can't do it, that attitude was not directed toward you. It was describing, or you as commissioner, it was describing a conversation I had with an individual who had that attitude. And, you know, it's an attitude, but it's not one that's, it's not going to work. That's your attitude. And I'm not saying that's your attitude, so I apologize for that. I didn't mean that. And I, you know, I'm somewhat aware of what you, you all described. I'm a realist. I understand.
I think it would be to talk to Peggy and just see what, what that coalition is, is doing to, you know, because I think she's bringing in all kinds, you know, all different groups, you know, and they're looking at doing the same thing, you know, so.
I figured it out this morning. Kickstarter, you know what Kickstarter is? It's like, it's, this is just kind of like, but people are doing it all over. It's like the Mineral County Advocate starts a Kickstarter campaign. Well, it's a, if I was going to develop a product or position, use it a lot. It's like, I want to produce this. It costs $30,000. I need, I need $30,000. So you put your project up, you describe your project, and you seek funding, crowdfunding that way. And it's, it's been wildly successful. You know, and there's trade-offs if, if someone in, you know, Ohio is interested and they contribute, then generally there's like, well, if we're successful, you know, you, you get this out of there. It's, it's kind of like, you know, in the music, we call it swag. It's like, you just give, you give them a gift, you know, in recognition. But if it doesn't work, it's just a crazy idea at this point. Before anything like that happened, yeah, Peggy's doing it.
Well, you know, I mean, I was telling her, you know, what your ideas were and, you know, and she said, "Well..."
Mostly, I wanted to see if it's a good idea, if everyone thought, and then it's like, because I know coming in here, where, where are we going to pay, how are we going to pay for that? And I frankly don't know or didn't know, you know, did the commissioners have a way to pay me? Is there some sorts of funding that you know about that I don't?
And I'm on board in Missoula. It's a bitter rural economic development district board, and they, apparently, they've got, they call it economic gardening, and it's, and it's like studying, you know, fostering and bringing in an economy. And they're, they're playing that in Missoula, in the valley and here. But a lot of those things are gathering data and trying to focus and target businesses, but it's kind of a long process. It's a lot of analyzing and discussing and, but ultimately, to be truly successful, you've got to find somebody with a business who ideally thinks this is the spot they want to be in. So I guess with business being down, it's kind of the main, everybody's scrambling in Raleigh County, Missoula County, not that business manufacturing trailers or whatever or the Bonner thing, but, yeah, we've been talking about, oh, how could we entice, you know, Hunting Shack ammunition or somebody like that, anybody that wants to come here? Like you said, without three-phase power there and with restrictions up Fishcrick and, I mean, like even the airport, I thought, oh, I thought, you know, I keep hearing that there'd be great ideas to do things with the airport, but then find out the FAA has a lot of limitations and restrictions on what kind of planes can land there, what time of the day they can land there, so.
What businesses can go in?
A lot of things you figure out at the surface looks simple. Hey, let's do this. And then you find out there's some rule or some restriction. That's where networking would come in, like, maybe we can find somebody higher up the chain who will grant a variance or exception to certain rules.
Do you all think there's more work to do than time or people to do it in that regard?
Oh, well, you know, so we do some networking. I guess we could, we could find out about the shows in Vegas, and maybe one of us could attend.
I volunteer, yeah.
I'll go to the, I'll go to the Elk Foundation every year.
I mean, I think your idea is good, George, but I don't know where we come up with money to pay for your plane ticket and for your wages to go be our ambassador, really. With the county population of only 4,000 and no jobs, we're just struggling to give people ratings, you know?
Well, Duane's going to take care of the Elk Foundation. Um, that would have to be county funding. I said, "That would have to be county funding."
Well, it's okay with, you know, as long as you go.
There you go.
So, yeah, we hear you, or I hear you, and you're lying.
Yeah, I think that we need all the ambassadors we can get, George. And I think that we do have some pretty good ambassadors. I think that, you know, there's things that could be done. I looked the other day, Glenn, you know, we've been talking about the Visitor Information Center. Have you looked at the new book that they've put out, Glacier Country put out? Mineral County doesn't give much showing in there, I didn't think. Used to be when, when Bill Hammer was down there and he kind of headed up everything that had happened with, with Glacier Country, we got a lot more visibility in that magazine. I, I wasn't very impressed with it. I think that it shouldn't be addressed, so.
They used to call us more often, different outfits, Travel Montana and Glacier Country. They would call us and ask for information. What's going on this year?
Right.
What's your calendar for the year? We used to submit things like that, but I guess it hasn't happened.
Ricky Mallory, I don't know, saw him over at the, the angles. Anyway, he, we were talking about, you know, promoting Mineral County. You know, he said, "Well, maybe we should approach the, the BPA, the business professionals at the school. It might be a good project for them to come up with some kind of a, a plan." You know, it might be a good school project to...
School kid ambassadors?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know. I thought it was kind of a good idea, you know, that, maybe a school project for maybe some of them. I mean, they're, they're young kids, they're new technology and everything, you know, that's coming out that, you know, they might have a good idea, something we never thought of.
Do they maintain a website for the town or just for the school? Or how does that work?
The BPA? I have no idea.
They have both. The school has a website, and the town of Superior has a website also. I can't, it's a weird acronym to get into the school, but there is one, yeah.
Is there a Mineral County website?
Yeah, there's a county website and a chamber website.
Who does the county website?
I think y'all have one.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, our resource guide is on there, and our plug office is on there.
Well, we put, like, Tim puts his planning documents, the subdivision regs, all of the, the courts have stuff on there, even forms and board applications, and it's not like a fancy website, but it's a...
Yeah, it's, yeah, primitive, but it's a website.
Are your, are your minutes posted on there? Or?
What I, what idea did you have, George, of a Chicago company wanting to come to Hagen, where we've got all this unrestricted land? Who were you thinking of?
Oh, I have no, no company, no individual, none of that. It's just the idea that we have to use what we have and...
What do we have that you think would be a big attract? We were in downtown Chicago, letting them know what we have.
Well, I might have the percentage wrong, but I'm going to say we have 92% of undeveloped federal land, you know?
But the Chicago boys have been around the same wall we do. We can't even have snowbilling up here anymore because of somebody's decision in another location. And in fact, it got expanded to the Idaho side, which will be enforced next year unless law. We, we can, all we can do is walk in our ninety percent federal land. We can't have four-wheeler trails. We can't have, we can barely get the Route of the Olympian approved right now without it being just a headache.
But we still have ninety-two percent. We still have...
Right, but it's not unrestricted. You said it's unrestricted land.
Well...
For a business to come here.
Yeah, no, no, no. I didn't mean it in that regard.
I mean, I think they're gonna not want, want, they will not want to come here because they're gonna see that there's nothing they can do with this ninety percent land. They're gonna be just as frustrated as we currently are. With any idea that we have, it's shot down. We just want balance. We wanna have room for the hikers, for the bicyclists, for the four-wheeler people. We have so much land. We could have, it's so vast, we could have a balance. There could be maybe an ATV four-wheeler shop built at the bottom of where there currently are logging roads that are decommissioned or planned to be decommissioned. Open them up. Let the four-wheelers have a loop. They'll stay on the trail. If it's steep enough terrain, they won't be outlaw riders. There's a four-wheeler shop. Oh, guess what? Now there's a restaurant next to the four-wheeler shop. Oh, guess what? Now there's a Super 8 motel to house all the people from Idaho and Billings that wanna come and see the great, and no user conflict. We'll have all the hikers over here. And we'll have the Hiawatha here. But we can't even implement any of these ideas about balance because the federal government doesn't wanna even entertain those thoughts.
Well, the environmental group, it's not just the government, the environmental group still.
Yeah, we, we wanna, we wanna do something with all that. I wanna look at it. Can't even have a job. You know what I'm worried about more? Not about creating new business here, but salvaging the ones we currently have.
Maintain it.
If we, if they, they keep cutting the Logging Sales Act they have, pretty soon there won't even be infrastructure to cut it two by four, because they'll just pull up stakes and be out of here. Talk about bringing new business. Who wants to come here? They're all gonna be leaving. We'll just have rotting, the firefighters might be on to the job in this county.
Well, we're down to one viable logging contractor in the county and they have to take their work out of our county wherever the sales are. Look how far Tricon has to go to ride their sails all over Clearwater Forest and Panhandle.
Laurel.
Thirteen loads of...
White Sulfur Springs.
Thirteen trail loads a day or, you know...
Used to be a mill right in White Sulfur Springs and now it's coming clear over here.
Yeah, which is kind of ironic because the environmentalists are all about conserving and not polluting. Well, guess what happens? You gotta take a load of logs from White Sulfur all the way to St. Regis. That's a lot of fuel.
Even though they put them on the railcar.
When I say there's ninety-two percent, ninety-two percent federal land, you're saying it doesn't matter? Eighty-five, thanks.
We round it up to ninety because then we throw in the states and the other land that we can't touch. We always say ninety, but...
What, I understand what you're saying, you know, everybody does. That's not gonna change what I'm saying. That's not gonna change. Although we shouldn't stop trying to change it. Does anyone think? So if you put all your energy into that, you're spending energy and if you're not good, it's just not gonna happen. It's all, how can I articulate this? That eighty-five percent is still there. And we can't use it for, we can drive it at ATV on the road, any road that's not gated. And that's what we, that's what we have to do, right? And the other land is, it's there. And that's what I'm saying is we have this land. When I say unrestricted, I mean, it's nobody's private property. It's their, and it's part of us. And I think that's pretty, a pretty valuable thing because...
Yeah, but it limits your economic ability. I mean, why go to Chicago when we already have enough people? The baby boomer generation is approaching us. They're older. There's gonna be less people able to hike ten, twelve miles a day or camp up at Hart Lake. They're gonna be needing to use the forest in a more accessible way and not just restricted to hiking up a six percent hiking trail. And, and they're not gonna wanna ride their four-wheeler on the same road that they're gonna meet a logging truck or a pickup truck. They're, we, we need to start targeting different age groups and different users and, and carving out an area in this ninety percent land where everybody can play. I mean, if that's the pitch now, it's recreation, use this land for recreation, the logging world is gone, then let's start looking at some recreation for everybody, not just Lance Armstrong who can hike thirty miles in a day.
We, uh, when I first became commissioner, we looked at getting the, this side of the Little Joe Cave. Grizzly bear. That's grizzly bear habitat. Grizzly bear might get run over if that had pavement on it, you know? We may be able to get something going now. I don't know now that they're figuring out that there's more grizzly bears on the page than they thought there were.
Yeah, never mind.
And they're not scared of the pavement.
They walk right down the pavement in Idaho, but Montana...
Yeah, the Idaho side can be paved, but the Montana, they just resurfaced the Idaho side this year, if you're not aware. The Montana side, we're still going to keep, we're still gravel over here, you know? But when I became commissioner, I talked with the project manager and he goes, because of the grizzly bear listing, that set that project back ten years. It's been four years now, so maybe with the new data coming up, there's never really been any scientific evidence as to how many they've got counted anywhere. And now they're doing the DNA studies and whatnot and they're coming up with some numbers. So maybe we can get forward. But I mean, that's the, that's the kinda, you know, people are aging and they're moving here. We wanna pave that to make it easier for them to access that, so they don't beat their rigs up. More rigs will come. Nope, can't do that, you know? It's one roadblock after another.
Yeah, it's very frustrating, you know? Well, I'm just saying that...
Not that we've given up.
That the fourth is an attribute and use it as an attribute.
It is, it is.
Yeah, in various manners. I, I believe, we've got raffers. Let's, let's make place for the raffers. Let's make place for the fishermen. Let's make place for the snowmobilers. Let's make place for the hikers.
We're gonna have the Route of the Olympian going here hopefully real soon. We're gonna have mountain bikes coming in here.